I would like to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Chesapeake Beach to order. Low call. Please, Madam Clerk, note that all commissioners are present except for Commissioner Hahn. Next, we have approval of the October 26th Agenda, Planning and Zoning Agenda. I first would like to make an addition to the agenda tonight, please. I would like to add the August 4th minutes to the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda tonight? Let me first make a motion to make that change. I would like to move that we add the August 4th approval, actually approval of the August 4th minutes to the meeting agenda tonight.
Second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to add that. Is there any more additions to the agenda tonight? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as corrected, as amended?
All second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's go back to the August 4th Agenda. You've got your little notes on your counter here. We, of course, had an issue on the August 4th Agenda minutes where we had Commissioner Brown was absent for the meeting prior to that evening, and he was going to vote to approve, and there was discussion about the fact that he shouldn't be able to because he wasn't present. And so then he recused himself, thereby when he recused himself, we did not have enough
Quorum.
Quorum to be able to approve those minutes. So, after doing research, and our clerk and I went ahead and did some research on this because it's kind of a complicated issue for Robert's Rules of Order, excuse me, and Robert's Rules of Order, Edition 12. They're now on to an addition that handles all the virtual issues that come up with meetings. They are saying that basically approving minutes if you were absent is voting to, okay, voting to approve the minutes is not that you're affirming that you were an eyewitness to the events, but rather your confidence in the secretary or the clerk, the other members, and the process that produced the minutes. Members should not abstain or vote no necessarily from the process. In fact, you should participate in the discussion and any corrections and the approval. So, Robert's Rules is basically suggesting that a person who has not been to the prior meeting can go ahead and vote yes or affirm those minutes, and especially since a particular member did watch the meeting on video, that's what you said, you told us, right? So, I'm going to go ahead and ask Commissioner Brown if he is going to go ahead and change his vote. You did recuse yourself, so would you be able to change your vote to affirmative, to affirming those minutes? All in, second please, and all in favor of approving the minutes of August 4th, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we got that completed. And, thank you. Did you get that?
No.
Thank you.
What, well, did you say no?
She voted.
Oh, okay.
Right, and we also had a no from Commissioner Hahn, so that's perfect, thank you. Then, number three, approval of the minutes of September 28th, 2022. Any corrections?
I vote to approve the minutes of September 28th.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, number four, any comments from the public? I guess not this time. Okay, now on number five, we've got two items on unfinished business. If you remember, we brought these forward several meetings ago, and of course, with all the amendments, we didn't have time to really do these justice. We're bringing them back now to start working on them, and I don't think we're going to finish either one of them tonight, because I want to, we want to close this meeting off by nine o'clock tonight. We're going to try and give ourselves a break and actually do a reasonable conclusion here tonight. So, we're going to start with the consideration of text amendment to the zoning ordinance previously published with the agenda for the 9/6 meeting, and it's Planner Recommendation E for that particular agenda item. Amendment to Article 5, Section 290-19M, as in Mary, Design Standards for Townhouses to Incorporate New Standards and Revise Certain Existing Standards for Proposed Townhouse and Multi-Family Developments. So, can we please have a staff report on this? Mr. Jakubiec.
Okay, thank you. You know, we put these together under some level of time constraint and stress, and rather than creating a whole new section of the code, I went to the existing section of the code that deals with townhouses and design standards and incorporated new language there, language that was from the St. Michael's, apart from the St. Michael's draft, but also language that I thought would be beneficial and help us get there. There's a lot there, there's this kind of dense, but there's a lot that's not there too, maybe should be candid about that. And if the Planning Commission wanted to go full bore into very detailed design standards, we should talk about that, and maybe by the end of tonight, we'll have some more clarity what is presented there in that text amendment E, however, is a marked improvement over what exists now, in terms of giving the Planning Commission a little more structure and raising the expectations for development. And then the second part of this unfinished business was compatibility standards. I particularly like compatibility standards, particularly in the absence of more detailed design standards, because they really force a test to take place at the Planning Commission meeting. The test is, does this project fit with its surroundings? And that is a challenge to the developer from the get-go. They have to think through these issues of compatibility, scale, and the way landscape and open spaces are all arranged. It's very important, and it doesn't have to be a full-blown architectural type of study, but it can be, I mean, you can go really deep into these standards. The deeper you go into the standards, the more they become guidelines, however, as a practical matter. Guidelines are good. It's hard, for instance, to require, to sort of prejudge development projects that we've never seen. We can't contemplate what the intended purpose and use of a project is, or the market, or that's being, trying to attract it, to be attracted into a development. So, if you write very specific design standards and make them all required, it becomes very onerous on the process, and you've sort of regulated yourselves into a box, and you've, in effect, taken away your own discretion as a planning commission to make decisions and guide development. So, most jurisdictions, when they get into specifics, they will have broad requirements, and then more specific standard, guidelines. The things that they care most about will make as requirements, or the things that are foundational, it's basic, you've got to do this to even come to us, will make as requirements, but then provide guidelines and maybe some images and photographs and illustrations to sort of suggest what we mean by these standards, how you might apply them. None of that is provided in this. However, the compatibility standards do provide a paragraph or two that describes what it is that we're after here, you know, what a developer should seek to demonstrate to prove to you that the standard is met, right? That's a good approach. Having said that, it's still full of architectural type of terms like scale, massing, and proportions, and there's not easy terms to grapple with. So, I thought, since we're not intending to adopt something tonight, that I'd start with some concrete things, like images of townhouses and multifamily buildings, of those that could conceivably be built here in town, and those that exist now, just so we all kind of have a shared understanding of some things. And as I go through that, I think I'll point out some techniques that architects use to deal with massing and scale, and, you know, we'll get a sense of that. And also, just by, hopefully by discussing the images we see, we'll touch on some of the standards that are in the Amendment E, the text amendment E, as well. Okay? So, any thoughts or comments about that before I get started?
Basic question, why are we doing this? What's the motivation? Why, why does what we have need to be changed?
Well, the rationale would be to prevent the disrupting impacts of larger buildings on the character of the town. And so the question is, why is the high-density residential zone in the town has been built out? There's no more possibility for development there, except for redevelopment. The only place in town conceivably where higher-density or townhouse projects can be built is in the residential village zone, which is, would come about through more of an infill type of arrangement. And so, I don't know that, there are few parcels in the RV2 zone that could be built on without having some impact or relationship to the surrounding properties. Since there's no other development potential anywhere else but the RV2 zone, the importance of the standards has been elevated.
And what we have in front of us, you've got a line in, line out. What, that's the existing code, and as you've changed it, is that right?
Yeah, so in Planner Recommendation E, everything that has a line through it is existing code that's being removed. Everything that's in bold font is new in the text. However, in Planner Recommendation F, everything is new, so to make it easier on the eye, I just use conventional text, just sentence text.
I have a question as well. As far as walkability infrastructure and that kind of thing that goes along with multi-unit development, where is that in our code? Because we never put it in as a condition, even though it was on the agenda, but I don't see it here. So, I know you said that we could require a developer put in those things. Where does it say that?
Yeah, it doesn't say that in this, as things stand.
So then, who would have to do it?
You could require that sidewalks be built along the public street, or to connect through a multi-family development project as a condition of approval, in the same way that you could require that the driving, the drive aisle, carry traffic through the site rather than dead-end internally. You could require that sidewalks connect the parking area to the front door of each townhouse development, even though the standards don't say that, but that's, that's, you know, good quality site design. You have a lot of jurisdiction within the public purposes of the zoning ordinance to address issues like that.
And the public purposes of the zoning ordinance, so...
Public safety, health.
Where is that in the code, just so I can look at it?
Would be in the initial parts of the zoning ordinance, purpose statements in the zoning ordinance.
But we can cite the purpose statement and then inflict a standard on a developer?
Wouldn't be inflicting it.
Well, not inflict, but I mean, I mean, you could go crazy with that, is what I'm saying. I mean, if we say you have to build a sidewalk, can they come back and say, where does it say that?
Yeah, they can, and sometimes they do, and like I said, we don't have it in the draft now. As I indicated, there's a lot of things that are not in the draft now that could be improved upon, but the, and then, you know, as an example, I've often sought to have developers building the infill houses, or the houses on infill lots in the RV2 district in the middle subdivision of these houses that they've built. I've sought to have them build sidewalks along the street in every case, and I'm justified in doing that. In fact, I think we might have at least one do it, but Public Works has been reluctant to actually take them over and is saying, no, Chris, we really don't want to do it. We'll do it as a town cohesively, rather than having developers build them one at a time. And so there are standards in terms of drainage, and making sure things match up right, there's elevation issues that Public Works is concerned about if they're built piecemeal. So, we have to have an overall plan for that first. So, in many respects, the, you know, there, in the plan, in the comprehensive plan, there's a big recommendation, a few paragraphs talking about building sidewalks and walkability in the existing neighborhoods, resolving drainage issues, doing a sidewalk plan, all this. That is all in response to that. Like, I'm not being successful in requiring developers to build sidewalks because I don't have the datum to match them to. They don't know where to connect it to, what grade, and how far, and all that, so we need to do that type of work.
Right, but isn't that pretty standard? I mean, the Heritage just built a sidewalk. I don't think we took grades of every place that they were going to build a sidewalk. And I know that they had to, based on being in the RPC. But if we're going to get large projects, they need to build walkability in their projects.
No one's, I, no one's suggesting that's not the case, I mean, I, I, I don't think you need to persuade your commission members of that. I mean, I would suspect everyone's...
But wouldn't it be smoother if the developer knew before he started drawing plans, in any detail, that we were going to, that we do require, you know, the sidewalks, the all the things that you were talking about? Wouldn't that be simpler for the process? And instead, he brings his full plan, and then we say, ah, wait a minute, wait a minute, we want a sidewalk here, duh, 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 duh.
Couldn't agree with you more. I, I mean, I think we need, need and have those types of standards in the code.
Okay.
And when we're dealing...
But at this point, there is no design, no standard, no, nothing in the code about sidewalks.
Right, right, right.
Oh, so that has to be developed before we can tell people what they need.
Exactly.
It needs to be with Public Works input.
To be clear, when someone's building a public street, they're building sidewalks because that's part of the public street. The question is, if someone's building on an infill lot, say a 20,000-square-foot lot, then they're going to put three or four little bungalows or something, or townhouses, are we going to require them to put a sidewalk where there's no sidewalk now along 28th Street, or, you know, 30th Street? That's sort of the question. We could make that a requirement now, but in reality, we have a difficult time enforcing that requirement, as I've indicated, because the town doesn't have the engineering staff to kind of do the study yet. We haven't done the studies to indicate where the sidewalks ought to be. And sure, when a new development of scale is being developed, all that gets engineered and worked out, but when you're piecemealing something over many decades, it's much more difficult. In fact, the town has had developers build sidewalks in the middle subdivision, and you might not find them because they're under grass, or they've been washed away, and they've become drainage ditches, but, or they're three-foot sidewalks, but they're there, in many places there, and they've been broken, and so staff is just not willing to rush out there and have developers build all these sidewalks without a basic plan yet. But not a plan, but a detailed schematic of where sidewalks need to be built, and the grading, and we have to deal with drainage and flooding and other issues. So, we're really retrofitting existing roads, is what we're doing here. So, that's a public kind of project. It's not, and once we have that laid out, then we could have individuals build if it's necessary to fill in the gaps.
So if they're on a public road, for instance, if they're building on Cox Road, they would have to build their own sidewalk per our code as it exists now?
I would, yeah, I would really, no, they're not building Cox Road, but if we required it, they would. When, for instance, the Rock, or the Cassidy Court subdivision, the townhouse project, it's on, no sidewalks were planted and built along that stretch, not a very long stretch of roadway on Cox Road, easily could have been built, nothing preventing the sidewalks, but apparently they weren't required because they don't exist now. For me, I typically require those up front, and that townhouse would build the sidewalk, and it might sit there for a decade or so. Cox Road, the grades are established, there's, there's really little in the way of problems that we face in these older subdivisions. Cox Road is more county road, the county, sort of a rural-type road still, but that sidewalk was not, wasn't built there.
But we could require it, though.
Yeah, we could require, you could require as part of standards in code, or...
By our code as it exists?
Yes, you could.
Okay, because, because, I mean, they just increased the RV2 density, and that patch, by the numbers, I know you say it comes in differently, can get 170 households.
Yeah, I still contend that number's not.
No, I know.
Have we been down this road, I think?
Right, I'm just pointing out, that's a lot of people to have no sidewalks, so hopefully, I'm glad to hear that we can require them to build them.
But I think the point that I'm hearing on the commission is that there is a level of detail that I think they're thinking we need to have in this. At least, I think we need a little more detail. I hear it from a few commissioners that the problem with not having it in our code is that then it's hard to come back after you receive a site plan and say, oh gee, you know, it's not here, we have to have you go back and do it, oh, you know, because we really want it now.
That I was saying, it's just more complicated.
And that's what Jan was saying, is that we really want them to know upfront what we expect of them, so that's why I think it's probably better, in my opinion, if we think about putting it into this original code. But anyway, go ahead, Mr. Jakubiec, and do your presentation.
Okay. I have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, go ahead.
Chris, when you show us images or examples of buildings, would you describe for me the concept of, I understand, you know, the front of the building to the rear of the building, but the front of the building to the front of the building, I'm not sure I'm clear, will you go discuss those, different requirements, when you show us?
Yeah, thanks for that. I, I have some images there that set us up for that type of discussion, although I don't have the detailed measurements, but at least we can see how things relate to the standards.
Thank you, I just want to make sure that my understanding of it is your understanding of it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, these standards, in terms of the applicability, where they effectively would be applied, they would apply wherever a townhouse or a multi-family project would be allowed, be permitted. Only in three zones, and first is the residential high-density district, and every high-density, every property zone, residential high-density is built out, so it's, it's, that's already built out. The RPC district would require special approvals. There's conceivably a possibility that RPC could be created somewhere in the town or through a future annexation, but the RV2 district, and those are, those areas in the town that are zoned RV2 are highlighted on the map, are places where conceivably a townhouse or multi-family project could be built. But remember, the minimum lot size for a project would be 20,000 square feet, so it's just short of a half acre. You have to have that to be eligible to seek approval for a multi-family project. The files are relatively large, so they take some time to upload. So here's some townhouses, townhouse projects, two and three stories with essential open space. These are in our region, and, and they're relatively large projects. I should point out that both the images in the tops to the left and then the lower right incorporate a central green, village green, and under the design standards, or the standards that have been approved already by the Planning Commission and being considered by the council, every, for every dwelling unit, 1,000 square feet of open space would be created, and 75% of that open space would have to be recreational type of space, set up and proved for recreation. So, these spaces are intended to do that. Couple of things to point out here, the fronts of the buildings face the open space. What we often see when we see development projects is that the open space is the afterthought, and it's the rear of the buildings, the side of the buildings that face the open spaces, all of a sudden becomes kind of a crummy place to be. Not always, but it can. Here, the, this really creates kind of a central, central green, and it's a nice quality to... Each project has sidewalks, sidewalks run along streets and along the open spaces. Next slide.
Can you go back to that last slide?
Yeah, sure.
So, that right top picture, that would be a side-to-front picture, like Ms. Brown was talking about? So you have a side townhome with a front?
Yeah.
That is adjacent to it, right?
Yes.
So when you're talking about setbacks, you're talking about how far between a side and a front, right?
Right.
That would be an example of the side to the front.
The top right slide?
The top right, I'm talking the top right slide.
At the end of that brick sidewalk?
Yeah, at the end of that sidewalk.
It may not be the best example, that spacing is really generous.
I was going to say, that, that's a nice generous, that's more than we have right here. Front to side, you only have 20 feet, and that would be at least 50.
This is more like, because the design is entirely different here, you have much more space, the houses are fronting out onto a village green here, but yeah, that, that is a condition of, that speaks to that standard.
But theoretically, if you have 20 feet, you could have the front of a particular townhome just 20 feet from the side of a wall, basically.
Yeah, it's not uncommon arrangement in townhouse projects.
So, we're not great for views, but at the end of this, on the top right, are you referring to the townhome all the way at the end with the...
End unit?
Yeah. And so the, the front to the side?
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Gotcha.
Okay, so, according to ours, that would, it has to be 20 feet, according to what's on this document?
Smallest it could be, right, it can be much greater than that.
Okay, minimum of 20 feet.
Minimum, that's right.
Right, but they could build it that way.
Yeah, you have to have the worst-case scenario.
Right.
Always had the worst-case scenario here.
I want to, to be clear, just as a, to prove your sense of confidence, while a standard is stated as the minimum, that is not a guarantee part of the developer, you know, if he said, okay, I got 20 feet, here it is, you have to improve it 20 feet. No, the minimum is 20 feet, but if there's a rationale for why it ought to be bigger, to allow more light and air, to create more of a greater pedestrian path to the area, to accommodate the full build-out of the landscaping, the trees, then it's larger.
Can I just interrupt here, because we, I really don't think we should go down this road of saying, the code doesn't say it, but we can do this, because I don't know how many people have been through site plan review, but that's not how site plan review goes in this town.
What are you saying?
Let's hold out for discussion. Let's go ahead with Mr. Jakubiec.
Let's, let's just try to get some good standards in place so we have an easier time with site plan review.
Absolutely, we all want that.
We all want that, but go ahead, Chris.
So, here's a, a townhouse project of really exceptional quality, it's in northern Baltimore, very high-end, actually, and it has a lot of landscaping. You see, it's almost overly endowed with landscaping, but it really creates sort of this townhouse cluster in the woods kind of thing. The image on the left is the aerial photograph, and you can see that in some cases, the various building, buildings are close to each other. So, I'll show one condition here. So I'll show one condition here.
They don't have all flat fronts, I mean, they're, right? Like any of those five or six units, one is, you know, 10 feet from the sidewalk, the next one is 20, the next one.
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Very soft set.
Yeah, thank you.
Which actually really creates a nice feeling as you drive through. But here, you have the side of the building, rear of the building. So you have the, you've got an enclosed back porch and a side.
Okay.
Here you have two sides. And that distance is 15 feet, 15, 17 feet or something in the measure. Another side-to-side condition here.
Very.
And again, same type of pattern up there. And I can assure you that this doesn't feel onerous at all. It doesn't feel, it feels actually quite nice. And so the distances much depends on the quality of the project and how it's thoughtfully designed. You see that these are two-story townhouses. If they're three-story, maybe the distances need to be set back a little bit more. But a two-story, you have a different relationship. And also, the thing I want to point out here is that you see in the front yards here, this picture is kind of taken from the street. Look at the front yards, they have that fence. That fence is used throughout the community, creates a kind of this really nice unified approach throughout the entire community. So that, not, everybody doesn't have their own fence. There's just a unified pattern. The decks on the rear are all the same, too, same color pattern.
That would be in the HOA docks, right? That would be in the HOA docks?
Yes.
They would enforce.
And it would be built from the beginning like that. Yes, yes, there are in that project, some places where they're five, but generally, they're four clusters of four.
That particular one looks like it's right on the edge of what we're proposing. It says rear building to side of building, 30 feet.
Right.
Reference, that looks to me like.
And that is the current, town's current standard, by the way. I didn't make a change to that. So here's another project. Here, the, there are kind of two conditions going on. Where the grade allows it, they've provided parking kind of in the building. See, they sort of swoop down into a garage. But where the grade doesn't allow it, you walk right out onto the street, and the parking is surface parking. This project really does a good job with its open space. It actually has a pool for the residents, but the open space, on the bottom image, the open space is that kind of nice landscaped area, walks up the hill a little bit to kind of plateau and leads you to that swimming pool and that more active open space area.
Are these projects that you brought in, Chris?
I brought in?
Yeah, under your planning. I was just wondering if you knew where the code was for these projects, so we could look at it.
This is in Baltimore County, the other was in Baltimore City. So I'm familiar with Baltimore County's code, but this project is probably 30 years old, 25 years old, so I don't.
The next time, you should bring in your projects, that you bring in.
I don't, I don't represent, develop or design projects.
Your towns that you plan for.
Other towns?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That looks very nice, but why do you think that Richfield Station or Heritage didn't develop a community area like that? Because it was required in that case?
Yeah, but having said that, Richfield Station does have a, at least one kind of common open space area where its townhouses are, but it doesn't have the same quality as this. The town's, town doesn't have an open space, common open space standard. And so as we go through, I'm going to go through all the illustra, images of existing projects in town, you'll see that there's just a lack of open space generally, because the town didn't require it. It wasn't part of the standard.
But it was in Richfield Station. It was in Richfield Station.
That was required in Richfield.
I mean, a pool wasn't, but yes, they, the RPC requires open space.
Here are some other townhouse projects. This actually slide gives me an opportunity to kind of talk about a couple, both positive and perhaps negative conditions. First, in this scenario, this upper left, by the way, this is a relatively dense townhouse project, and the townhouses are wide, too. These are 24-foot, you know, wide townhouses, wider than typically you'd see. Here, there's, this road is, the lane is kind of like a rear accessway to all the units. The front of the units faces the street and has a nice appearance. What people say in the industry is that when you put the cars in the back, in the sidewalks, I mean, everything in the back, all of a sudden, no one is seen in the front anymore. It's as if it's a ghost town.
Right.
Because everyone comes home, pulls into their garage.
Never to be seen again.
Yeah, they don't kind of use the front anymore. But any case, what it went, so that, this is the sort of, it does have all the access coming to the rear, the service drives. What I like about this particularly, one, is the coordinated approach to decks that are built all at one time. And this is a recurring issue in Chesapeake Beach, especially in Richfield Station, when we're processing applications for deck permits. Very complicated, and it's wonderful that when they're built by the developer, delivered in a consistent pattern, it creates a quality, and it removes a lot of neighborhood conflicts that frequently result when someone's seeking to build a deck.
What is that, that white panel at the, on the end unit?
Privacy thing.
Oh, yeah.
Privacy from?
The house next to the one with the flag?
Oh, the one on the end.
The top left.
Oh, top left, oh, yeah, yeah, that's a privacy thing. There's, they have them on the lower right as well. The lower right image has the same panel.
Oh, yeah, I see.
You'll see that at Seagate up here.
Yeah, I just didn't see the, I guess, corresponding other panel on the other side. It seems like there's nothing on this end unit, so it didn't strike me as being privacy, because there's not a unit, right? You know, like in this bottom right, there's not a, on the other side of that privacy panel, there's, it doesn't seem to have a balcony, and so that's why it didn't strike me as privacy, but I see it now, okay.
Very little balconies. I don't know that I agree with the full-on straight deck. To me, we have townhouses, not the green ones, even though they are set back. But some of the development that uses the building in ways to create varied privacy among different units, I think provides more privacy and provides more interest, better massing than a, you know, this is a long strip of deck. I don't know that.
And look what they're looking at.
Yeah.
The back of somebody else's building, or maybe it's the front.
Yeah, I don't think that looks enjoyable.
It's just all asphalt and concrete, I mean, I wouldn't want to look at that, that's a lousy idea to me.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you. I mean, there's a, you can see how this departs from the other two images I showed you. But what I wanted to say is just, if townhouses are going to have decks, it's good to have standards ahead of time established. And ideally, the developer builds them at one time, so that there's just not this mix match of decking and different layers and colors and shapes and projections, which, that's just the only point I wanted to make on that.
Yeah, so if you want to see this, you can go to National Harbor.
Yep, you're right about that.
But so, in the standards that are being presented here, does the deck count against that open space or not?
Not against the open space, no, it doesn't. No, the open space is common open space. So these decks are on the lot proper. These are on the individual's fee simple lot.
I don't mean, I mean, yeah, the setbacks, does it count against the setback?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
No, it's allowed to be within the required setbacks.
Setback is from the back of the building to back or side or front of the building. Does not include any balconies or?
Right.
Decks or what have you.
In Chesapeake Beach, the decks on townhouses are allowed to project into the rear yard, the required setback. So here, this project probably has a rear yard setback of, say, 25 feet from the edge of the sidewalk to the building. And here, the decks are projecting into that rear yard.
Right, right.
The same condition applies in the town.
Oh, if you go to the bottom right, is it possible that everybody has their own little private backyard as well? Do they have side fences, do you think? Because to me, that really adds to the townhouse feature, if you have your own little backyards, that you would have side fences, and it enhances the town, because then you have areas for kids to play in, whatnot. They don't have to worry about the totlot deficiency that we have so much. So I really like the idea of including side fences as well as the back perimeter fence when you have a townhouse situation.
Isn't that up to the owner, whether he puts a fence up?
Or the development.
Well, I mean, that's something, but it could be a requirement that you add. It's one of those things you could add as a requirement, that they have those. So that alleviates a lot of the issues for our lack of park area and.
You have to have enough room first.
Okay, there, okay, keep going. Keep going, Mr. Chukubiac, quick, fast.
But I did incorporate, without getting into details, a standard that says, basically, if you're doing decks or you're designing for decks and fences, do them at once, or completely a set of standards that run with the project. So that then you don't have all these varying things, material, different materials, different conditions. Generally, in the kind of compact multi-family context, having some coordination among these sort of accessory structures is beneficial to the quality of the environment.
Developer owns the HOA until a percentage of units are sold, so that developer could say, any fences built will be.
Yeah, sure.
They're not?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
In the HOA requirements, the builder could require the things that we're all talking about, so that you don't end up with three different colors and three different heights and.
Where the planning commission requires it as a condition of approval. Submit a, a design standard package that will run with this project as part of, to be administered by the HOA.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So if you look on the lower left, these townhouses are known, are being called villas. For some reason, the building industry has adopted that word, it sounds nice somehow. But it's a bigger than normal townhouse, and it has all the living, the full bath, full master suite, kitchen, everything on the ground floor, which is great for us oldsters, because we can do our living upstairs, and the kids come to visit, they can go upstairs. That is a trend that's happening in the industry. But it also is a nod to like our suburban auto-oriented culture, because you have a two-car garage facing the street. And here, you have two-car garage, which is actually a 24-foot width of garage, and then 24, 26-foot width of asphalt leading down to the street. Now, when we've talked about compatible, in itself, that may be perfectly fine, but think about that in the context of anywhere in Chesapeake Beach. Is that going to be consistent with the character of the cottage housing, where the garages are relatively smaller, houses, so, you know, driveways are, so we, if that project were proposed on 30th Street, maybe it works out, because that's kind of how the single-family houses are built on 30th Street, but maybe not so much on right here, like on East Street or D Street, right closer to where we are today, tonight. So there's a kind of a compatibility question that these types of development patterns raise. And the question is, is it really a good fit for that particular neighborhood?
And I'm sorry to interrupt, Chris.
Let's let Chris go, come on, he's not going to finish, we don't keep going, let's go.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, write it down, we'll talk later.
So here are a lot of townhouse building types, these are all under 35-foot tall. They range from the kind of the classic historic townhouses, you know, three stories, strong cornice line, you know, step up from the sidewalk, even habitable basement, to much more modern appearance, two-story. These standards that are drafted now don't speak to architecture in any specific way. Like, this is what we want, this is not what we want. But each of them is an expression of the townhouse form, but a different expression. And I, even if you look at the variety of townhouses in town, you'll see that there's a lot of variety already incorporated into projects. They do some neat things that are really good. They have the public realm in this, which is the street, established by the curb and the green space strip and the sidewalk. Then they have a gradual transition into the private realm. So you move from the sidewalk into a little grass area or a landscaped area, depending on where it is, maybe a use of a fence or steps to separate levels before you enter the house. It's a really neat design technique that sets these projects apart and makes them feel kind of special. And it's a technique that actually we use in single-family construction, too. A lot of people do, with sort of a fence, maybe a small three-and-a-half-foot picket fence along the sidewalk, and shrubs, and as you move to the house, things get a little more private. That's a technique that you could require as part of standards, a transition from the public realm to the private realm, using landscaping, fencing, and other means to create a sense of separation and kind of dialogue between the street and, you know, we can word it any way you want. But I just want to highlight that, that's an expression, these express something that's specific and intended through design.
Chris, I just want to, can you go back to the slide right before this?
Sure.
This, in the bottom left, are those three different, separate townhouses, but they have different facades that will, like every other one, the two on the end will, that's the pattern? That the two on the end are similar, the one in the middle is not? Are they diverse facades on the three townhouses?
Yeah, yeah, they're somewhat different. The ones on the corners are kind of alike, but they're kind of the mirror of the image of each other, but the one in the center is definitely different.
But they're three separate, with they just have different, okay, thank you.
As opposed to everything looking the same?
On the facade, yeah. Because the rest of these all seem to mirror the same.
Right.
Okay.
They all feature different roof lines, you know, with traditional, some flat, you know, some old-time flat roofs, some more modern flat roofs, and some, image in upper left, look like it could be in Breckenridge or something like that, in the mountainous area, has that character to it. Multi-family building types, again, all under 35 feet. Some of these are the variation on the typical garden-style apartment, you know, the garden-style walk-up apartment that we're all familiar with, like the image on the left is, harkens back to that, it's a modern version of it. The one in the center is the exact same thing, it's a walk-up garden-style apartment, but it's made to look like single-family houses, you know, kind of basic motifs. The one on the lower right corner, that is a duplex, just looks like a single-family house, more than anything, it's how it reads. At least it would as you, you know, walk by or drive by. And then you get a little more denser projects up on the left, again, three stories. Again, three stories or two-story um projects. Uh the one in the middle has submerged parking. You you kind of drive in and park underneath the structure.
Did you point out the features on the one in the top right? Like what each thing is, a gable, a
The top right?
Or top left, I'm sorry.
Oh, top right.
Yeah, there's nothing on the top right.
Oh, um so here, this looks, if without a lot of these features, this would look like a really big building. But what it's done is stepped back the the mass towards the rear. So the dormer with the two little windows on the very top of the roof that projects out, creates some livable space up there, it's set far back, far from the street, further than the porch and the main building wall. That's a technique to allow buildings to go higher, but not to dominate the street. Then you have the the A-frame gable facing the street. You have a porch which breaks down the mass of the the whole facade of the building.
That little thing on the end townhouse, the little, you know, two-window, it's not a third story, but it's a something.
The dormer?
Sets back.
Oh, I was looking, okay, I was looking at the gable roof and thinking that was the dormer. Okay, okay.
And then you have, here you have the sidewalk, then you have that small three-and-a-half-foot fence and shrubs planted in the front yard, kind of create the sense of separation and some buffering between the project and this kind of physical project and the public street. Did I?
Yes, thank you.
So I mean, you could see, um at least in that image there, left some parallels to a lot of the shapes that are used in the architecture here in town, the archi- in the multifamily buildings that are here or the townhouses that were used here. Okay. So here are the townhouse and multifamily communities in Chesapeake Beach. So this is sort of from the aerial standpoint. This is a drone footage that we did um last year, I think it was. The bulk of these are Richfield Station. Um in fact, everyone is except the lower right-hand corner. And the one in the center right is where the townhouses are four stories tall. That's in the, you know, that was allowed under the RPC regulations. Very dense, um not much trees, not much green space. It it has a feeling that it would be clearly incompatible with existing neighborhoods in town. I I it just, it would overwhelm.
Those are the ones that they built that require them to convey the FIDS, correct?
That what?
Those were part of the FIDS agreement.
Maybe I don't know. The image to the left, upper left. Oh, yeah. Okay, so that that is actually on um, that's behind Lido's Pizza. That's the closest townhouse or closest housing development we have to the wastewater treatment plant, which would be just off to the right of that image, the upper-left image we're talking about. So um and I, for the life of me, I've just forgotten the name of that housing development. There are actually two of them. They're separate. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven townhouses in a row. What they have is a open space along the perimeter that is really not usable and then a central parking lot. They've put sidewalks on their private roads that lead right to the public street. You see that? You see the sidewalks? So they did that. And this project is thirty-five years old, I I think. So that is a a a project that has been built in town. Probably not, um it doesn't reinforce the pattern of linear streets, housing, fronting the street. This is, that townhouse is fronting a central parking lot without any real open space. Big contrast between this and the previous images I showed. So the ones on the left or the low, the the upper right and then the lower left and lower center are in Richfield Station. And these are more of the standard type of townhouses, uh townhouse projects in Richfield Station. And the one on the right is um next to Seagate, Seagate subdivision.
At Seagate?
Yep, very small footprint of development, but densely developed. As far as I can tell, there's, I don't think there's any public open space with with respect to Seagate.
So the one on the upper left, how many lots flat? So somebody wants to build one identical to that?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
How many lots would they have to buy in the RV2 area?
No, I see what you're saying.
Lots in the RV2 are about seventy-five hundred square feet.
Really depend on
The ones with either the houses.
But I can, uh how about if I I take you through that math with the last slide I have? Because it's it's because I I I started, kind of anticipated this question. I started with a standard one-acre lot, just hypothetically, let's apply standards of one acre. And then I stumbled upon the Cassidy Court project appearing and it's point nine-seven acre. And my my numbers were right on, right on the money. So I figured, let's actually look at that real project. So we'll get to that. So here are more townhouse buildings or multifamily buildings in town. Captain's Quarters is upper left. It's off of Harbor Road.
Rented or owned?
Rental. It's a
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's a howling.
Yeah. And the other one is howling too, the one we were just talking about that Larry just asked about. The image there on the right is next to my, from from Mama Lucia's parking lot. I'm sorry, um from Bea, a rest- new restaurant's parking lot. So that's Baycrest.
The right, top right?
Uh middle, middle, uh top middle.
Oh, uh-huh.
See, I think it's Seagate, right? And science says it is.
No, Baycrest, I think.
Baycrest.
I think it is too, yeah.
Baycrest, that's the name for it. Then the the image on the right, though, upper right. I believe that's Seagate.
Yeah, upper right is Seagate.
Center of the project. And then lower left is right across the street, actually. And then the bottom left is the Fishing Creek Public, uh subsidized housing project, the tax credit housing project. Just one snippet of one building. But then the Harbor House Marina, um which is an apartment complex next to Abner's Restaurant. Yeah. Which is obviously non-conforming with respect to any of our zoning ordinances.
That sure is true.
But so um I can say, I think without exception, that, well, the um generally speaking, these projects don't have an open space component. Simply don't have an open space plan or open space component. It's not universal. There are projects in town that do. In fact, project across the street does have open space and tennis courts and walking trails among the water. Has really nice kind of um open space areas. But by and large, most of the townhouse developments don't. I included this one because, not to suggest that it's
I mean, C Street, right?
Yeah, this is picture of C Street. The the big picture and then the one on lower right are the same, just in different angles. But the picture above, I I think that's Baycrest. But I thought to myself, boy, how similar they actually are in terms of scale and massing. These houses on C Street are pretty tall, uh the three-story. They they're close together.
Design most of those?
I've tried a few of them.
Yeah, and um and they they kind of read like the and they're, you know, relatively new compared to the townhouse development projects. These are, these are relatively new and they kind of look like um there's the project up in the upper right in many respects. A lot of the same angles and colors and patterns and spacing and proportions.
Red roof. That's that's my house. Hundred and twenty square feet.
In the middle?
That's pretty tiny, baby.
In the middle, on the right?
On the left.
Left.
A red roof garage.
Red roof.
Oh.
So here's Cassidy Court.
No, no, I didn't, Larry, really.
Can you go back to that? Can you go back to that to that um picture? So um let's just say that the the building with the port- the porch is in the front there.
Yes.
How close to the sidewalk is that? That seems a little close with the height of that building.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk.
Okay, okay, not a sidewalk, but to the street edge, I guess. I mean, does that, doesn't it seem like it's too tall to the proximity of the street? To me, it just seems like it's overwhelmingly tall for that.
These are the properties behind skinning.
Yes, that's exactly right. C Street behind that lot.
Yeah, because I think I bite down here. Yeah, well, the front to them is the water, so.
Well, that's true, but don't we want some good look to the town too? I mean, don't we want it to look, you know, decent to the town or what is the, what is the?
So should I tell my neighbors that you want to tear their houses down?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, if you had a whole line of townhomes.
It's too ugly. We're taking it.
I'm just saying, if you have a whole line of townhomes that are right up against the street, we've talked about that before.
Oh, I'm with you.
I want to have some setback on the top floors or some kind of something that ma- doesn't make you feel overwhelmed by the the height of the building.
Yeah.
You know, so that's what I'm asking, I guess. I didn't ask it correctly.
No, that's
So if if um something like this were proposed um on Twenty-Eighth Street, but assuming, let's just say this, these were a group of townhouses that came in.
Right, right.
I would think that using the compatibility standards here, the developer wouldn't even show up with that proposal. But if he did, he'd read the staff report and say, uh, doesn't make sense. Or then if that wasn't enough, you would say that project is not compatible with the scale and massing of the architecture on the street. The houses on the street are set back twenty-five feet, have green lawn in front of them, um et cetera. That is not consistent with the character
But if you develop that property across the street from this, which is empty, which is going to be townhomes, I think, maybe, I don't know. Couldn't you then build the same mass and the same? Couldn't you then take this and then put it throughout that entire green space?
Presumably, someone could say, well, that
Rod and Real proposed a fifty-five-foot tall.
Originally, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, with Mark. And I think that went by the wayside.
Those compatibility standards were in effect when in the campground up on B Street, you have two new properties that they do not, or they are not compatible with the surrounding
They're the diametric opposite of what is there.
What I want to do, actually, I I began taking photographs of that. And now the trees are starting to leaf out. I'm going to go back and I'm going to sh- show this. I'm going to develop this point with with the commission, if I could. Because I, you you've raised this a number of times, so I'm going to show what the new construction is relative to that pattern.
Well, yeah, what the the what concerns me is those standards were in effect and they they got approval and
Anyway.
Anyway.
No, these standards were not in fact
We didn't have compatibility standards.
And building height was at the midpoint of the eaves and the the ridge or the peak, not at maximum. So there, things were different.
But I thought there was still the, that the design had to be harmonious within the area.
As a condition of um of the uh Board of Appeals variance, that is a standard of that they have to apply.
House in the middle, I call it Green Aaron's House. That had to be the thirty-five-foot midpoint. Eve standard. Six or eight years old.
Yep, and that could have been higher. Yeah, theoretically, it could have been taller.
No, it couldn't have been taller, not by the code.
The the others are taller than that. The ones on either side are taller than the one in the center. And they, the thirty-five-foot standard was in effect when they were built too.
Talking of the black one?
Yep.
That was the thirty-five-foot standard also. And Chuck designed it, but uh
I'll lay this at my husband's
I went to the hearing on that one. And the midpoint between the peak and the eve is the eve over that little porch.
Which slide are we looking at? I'm sorry.
The far left
Okay, alright.
The black house. Oh, all all of those. In fact, that one got a variance because at that time, the uh the third floor had to be less than twenty-five percent of the uh square footage of the house. And they got a variance so that all three floors could be the same and each floor is eleven hundred square feet. That was like twenty years ago.
I do think the developments that came in previously that are that are somewhat older were very nicely done.
Okay, so Chris, it's eight, attendance after eight, and we still have to go to compatibility. So what more do we have up here now?
In answer to Larry's question, this is the Cox Road project in Cassidy Court. One acre in size. At one unit per five thousand square feet, that works out to eight units that are allowable. And this is eight thousand, I mean, eight houses are built on one acre. So in answer to your question before, if if you were going to do eight housing units in anywhere in the middle subdivision, you'd have to acquire at least an acre of land. So how many lots would that be? I mean, it could it could rain, it could be considerable, it could be, you know, half a block. So that's that's an acre in size there. Gets you eight lots.
Is that one in the corner? What is the one in the corner? I see four and four, but what is that? Is there one in the corner?
Upper right corner.
Upper left corner.
Uh, pretty left, the big one.
Oh, that's open space. I see it on the picture. I'm sorry, that's open space.
But if you look at it, it's open space, but it's unusable.
It's unusable.
It it just slopes down to stormwater management.
Oh, I see.
It's uh, so there's no real usable open space here. There's open space, quote, in air quotes, that wraps both sides of the townhouse project along Cox Road and then along the side yard. But it's it's, you know, it's landscaped area. It's it's open area, of course, but it's not usable for any recreation.
It's setting aside the part that that corner is not usable. Does that meet what we're discussing here tonight? Standards for setbacks, for open space, for all of those uh ideas we're discussing?
Doesn't meet the open space requirements. Um and
It doesn't mean, I mean, they've got that whole corner of the property there. And that wouldn't be enough to meet the open space requirements?
Well, you would need eight thousand square feet for the open space area.
Eight units.
That lot back there where it says open space is seventy-five hundred square feet. But um that's mostly stormwater management. So um the open space area, you could have
I'm setting aside the slope and and other things. I'm just saying, looking at it as as a flat piece of property.
That enough square footage? Is that your?
Yeah, that's my, that's my question. I mean, in the lower right-hand corner, it's all parking, right?
Uh, yeah, sure.
So you've got, looks like almost fifty percent of that acre is uh not built upon, not houses.
That's 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 actually right. That's, that's, that's actually right. It's almost, it's, it's under fifty percent.
Yeah. It's just, and, and that does not meet what we're proposing.
No, that would. Once you, at the density that's allowed, you'd have eight units on this acre. You'd have, minimum lot size would be two thousand square feet. So you'd have sixteen thousand square feet dedicated to lots. You'd have eight thousand square feet dedicated to open space. That's twenty-four thousand square feet. Now you're at half, fifty percent, just like you said, fifty percent of the acre. The rest is the sort of this perimeter open space and the parking lot. Which is to say that even when you, you develop at this sort of density, there is still a lot of kind of open area on a typical townhouse project. And so you could scale this up to two acres and everything scales up. So you'd have, again, you'd have, for a two-acre site, you'd have an acre of open area, open space that could be managed and designed in a way that creates the kind of the quality of the environment you want. Whether that's dealing with sea level rise or creating a nice buffer, screening, planting for landscaping.
Chris, in our open space definition, it says something about not including, excluding impermeable surfaces, but including buffers. Common open space can include buffers is what the town council's definition that was put forward says. So where do setbacks fall into those items?
Um, well, the setbacks would simply be the distance that a building has to be from a lot line. Then the buffer can be placed in the setback area.
So basically, a setback is included in the open space that is being required according to the definition that's been put forth?
Not exactly. Because there are setbacks that apply to individual lots. So for, for a townhouse project, there's still, the building has to be set back from a lot line. Each, each townhouse, each house sits on its own lot. And even though it's attached to one side and has a zero setback, it's got to have a setback on the other side. And that setback extends to the lot itself.
It doesn't count for the open space?
No, no. Whatever's private, whatever's on the lot.
But for a multi-unit, the buffer counts as open space and the setbacks count as open space. Is that what you're saying?
Or share of it, but seventy-five percent of the open space has to be recreational. So even though it could count, you still have to aggregate a lot of space in order to create the village green or the place to throw a football or the playground.
Right, and I guess that's my point about letting the setbacks count. Because already, you would need to get one acre. You would need to allow forty-three units, correct? Forty-three thousand square feet?
Oh, to get one acre of open space?
Yes, and if in that, so one acre, so now you have point seventy, point seven-five acres at the most for forty-three people. Not, not people, actually forty-three households. And now subtract from that. Well, that's, that's, that's what you have to require. You have to require point seven-five acres for forty-three households.
I think forty-three households on an acre?
Yeah, where is that coming from? On a multifamily?
No, for a multifamily unit.
Eight households on one, one acre.
No, this is, this.
So I'm.
Can I, can I slow down and, and explain it? So we require one thousand square feet per household of open space. To get an acre, you would have forty-three households. Because one acre is forty-three thousand square feet. So for forty-three households, you would get one acre of land and only point seven-five percent of that acre would be used for open space. So that's, that's, I think, Chris, first, I don't know how the number went down, but you, you, not, not that it's ever going to change, but just throwing it out there for anybody that's listening, you originally proposed fifteen hundred square feet for common open space per household, which I think could get a nice open space, but I don't know that that's a lot of open space.
Well, to put it in perspective, I hear what you're saying. If you had forty-three houses, the tract that those forty-three houses would sit on would be four point nine acres. So that's at minimum, because you need five thousand square feet per house. That works out to four point nine acres. So you would have four point nine acres, forty-three houses on it, and one acre of it would be the minimum open space. And seventy-five percent of it would have to be, you know, use recreational space, improved recreational space. But the houses, the units are not going to cover the entire surface area. There's going to be a lot of open space on that project that will not be parking and will not be building footprint, footprints. But there has to be at least common area. So all the other open spaces would be buffers along the roads, maybe forest conservation in this area, maybe a steep slope that has to be protected, you know, things like that. Lawns in front of the building as you walk along the sidewalk. None of that is common open space. All of a sudden, that's a lot. Then you've got to create your common open space area. So it's a relatively, in the scheme of things, it's a lower-density project with an ample open space. So it's a, these units would sit in like kind of a more of a suburban park-like type of setting. I shouldn't say park-like, but it's a suburban standard and still have open space that would be improved. Yeah. Yeah. So you can even look at that. I mean, if you look at this project, there's actually quite a bit of open space. And I, at home, I went through this. So we have fifty, like fifty-three hundred square feet of open space including this, this, this. That's not including this thing, all this, these kind of things and all this. So a development would naturally fill in this, the empty spaces with this open space type of thing. You might require that there be shrubs and trees here to break the mass of this tall building. This looks pretty ugly, the side of the building facing. I mean, if there's a sidewalk here, you don't want to walk along a big building. So standards would require that there be windows, maybe bay windows and other windows to kind of create a sense of break that mass down. And then you'd do some landscaping here. And this, you know, thing would have to be eight thousand, let's say eight thousand square feet. And ideally, you'd center it and make it more usable on this site rather than putting it in the rear where it's not accessible. And a walkway from the street would lead right to the open space, presumably. So there's a lot of tinkering you could do with a project like that. And I don't want to be critical of it. It's a fantastic little community. Every time I go there, I think, what a nice little area to live in. Just a really cute little set of houses, very well-maintained, so.
Built that.
Brookane. I forgot the name of that company that he operated, but he's done a lot of Calvary County.
Yes.
Residential development.
What else did you want to add to your?
Nothing.
Okay, so now we've got compatibility. Do we want to continue with compatibility next and come back next meeting and reintroduce questions and ideas on the design? Or how do you want to proceed with this?
Yeah, I'd like the commission to come back at the next meeting to talk about these things a little more detail. I don't know that I need to go through the compatibility standards themselves, but if I did in any kind of formal way, I like to have the standard and an image or two of the show with what the standard means. I think it might, might be helpful. Although you saw that I touched on a number of things, like proportion and scale and accessibility and sidewalks and things like that. Those are the things you'd be looking for if you were applying these standards.
So on the compatibility, let's, okay, well, I don't want to, I don't want to go to the next agenda item yet. So on this, do you want commissioners to come back then at the next meeting with more ideas about how they want to proceed with this as far as more detail, changes in setbacks? Or how do you want them to, what do you want them to come back with?
Well, okay, let's put this, let me take a moment here. The first set of design standards apply to townhouse and multifamily structures. That's it. They don't apply to commercial, they don't apply to single-family. And their applicability is practically limited to the RV zone. Unless a major catastrophe would happen, a new development would have to take place in the residential high-density district. It's really these kind of infill conditions. The compatibility standards apply to everything. Everything in the town, any, any new development. The zoning administrator would have to review a single-family house. The planning commission would have to review a commercial building or townhouse or multifamily or any other type of structure, arena, whatever. But you'd have to apply those standards universally throughout the town. And so think about, as you read them, think about that, that you'd be applying these to all projects. And defining the neighborhood is really important because we don't apply a compatibility standard in the abstract. We have to have something to compare it to. And so we compare it to the predominant character of the neighborhood. And that's really, the definition of the neighborhood is in the compatibility standards. And it provides that the zoning administrator ought to give you at least a recommendation so you can have something to go on to establish the boundaries of the neighborhood. Rather than the developer saying, this is the neighborhood, drawing the neighborhood so big as to allow anything. So you're going to decide what the neighborhood is and then take what is the essence of that neighborhood as the basis for comparing and contrasting the proposal against. Against, so.
We need to identify our standard.
Well, I think what I'd like you to do is read the compatibility standards really carefully and think about seeing a development project and thinking, well, is this compatible with my neighborhood? You actually think about each of your neighborhoods. What, what would I be looking for? And this is not, these are not very detailed architectural standards, but there is one standard that is architectural. It actually says the planning commission has the authority to require an architect, a third-party architect, work for you to evaluate the developer's mittel to ensure that it is, in fact, architecturally compatible. Then you don't have to rely on the, the experts, the developer.
So in the compatibility stand, okay, let's just, let's merge these two agenda items. So then, in the compatibility standards, you're not looking at a general town look. You're looking at, at look from block to block or from neighborhood to neighborhood. So the looks can be entirely different, you're saying. Is that possible?
Yeah, sure. I mean, what's compatible on C Street is not compatible with B Street, right? I mean, what would be compatible on, just out here in the maritime commercial district wouldn't be compatible with the middle subdivision residential area.
Well, the question is, could a commission come together and present ideas that could make a more cohesive look in the town? You know, may, maybe with roof lines. They have to have, they can't have flat roofs. They should have certain kinds of roofs or this kind of, these standards that might make the town look a little more cohesive. I know that a lot of little coastal towns do that.
Yeah.
Is that something that we're looking at in the compatibility? I mean, you're talking neighborhood to neighborhood, but could we talk generally?
So compatibility standards, in my view, help and work really well until such time as you adopt those design standards that are, you're talking about.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Remember, the comprehensive plan recommends a detailed architectural study and the development of the kind of vernacular architecture and the standards that derive from that. And, and I would imagine it'd be a pattern book that we would have. Everybody would have that. I would, as the enforcer of the code, you as reviewing development, developers would have it to build. And the compatibility standards, though, are a useful tool to have before that is adopted. And they're useful to have long-term. You can have the detailed design standards and the compatibility perfectly fine. I mean, that's actually very useful. But until you, such time as you have those, you need to make sure that new development really is a good fit, especially when you're talking about infill development. And in a compact town where, where what is built really matters.
Chris, we don't need to motion by our code to tell the town council to fund design standard study, correct? Because you said that you, you don't want to, you want to that to come from outside of you.
It's, it's up to the mayor and council if they want to fund a project.
Right, but, but it's not required that we say, fund a project and make a motion and make a resolution and all this other stuff. They can just fund it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we?
What this proposal is, the proposer, the builder will fund the architect's work for us.
I see what Chris is doing, because, yeah, what his, yes, I see what this code is doing. And I like those aspects of what you put forth, Chris.
Any other questions before we quickly, now he wants to get on to, so, okay. If anybody has any questions then with the, the design standards for townhomes and multifamily and compatibility, even though, did you want to do any kind of a quick overview of the compatibility? Or do you just want us to really read it? Because I know you want to get into a critical area. So how do you want to proceed with it?
Well, let me just, let me just go through them.
Okay, all right, so let's move on quickly. We're going to hold on this one.
Go through the seven standards.
Bring it back at the next one.
I mean, I have questions about both of them.
Yes, I know, we all do. We're not done here.
Can I ask a general question about all of this?
Well, do you want to wait until he goes through the compatibility issue?
It's, it doesn't have anything to do with anything in particular.
Okay, quickly, let's go, because I want him to quickly do an overview.
What is the intent of these? I mean, are we trying to get them to the town council in any particular time? Are they going to die on the vine? Are we going to talk about them forever?
The standards, you mean, that were.
Yeah, what we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
Are we trying to get them to the town council before we get a site plan or not?
Mr. Kubikak, that's a good question.
I, I don't feel that we're working on the gun to do this. And the town council has never said, give us compatibility standards or you're fired, Chris. I mean, there's no pressure like that. It's, the, the bulk of the amendments, there was clear pressure. We needed to do that for a lot of reasons. But this, there's, it's different. I think the commission should take its time to craft the best standards possible. I like the compatibility standards because it gets something done. It's immediate, it's protective and allows you the authority and discretion that you don't have right now. At least it conforms, it's good, but it's not the ideal. We're not there yet.
Right, I guess my problem is, is we continue to have no standards unless we pass some version of this next time and transmit it.
And I, I think, based on what I've heard in various meetings, that I think the council would welcome that. I mean, I've never heard anyone say, we don't want standards or guidelines.
So we should, I think we should try to get it done. I mean, we're going to get site plans in, in droves.
Right, well, that's why we're working on them tonight. And we're trying to get both of these done simultaneous so that we can kind of get them, proceed to finishing them.
And once we finish looking at these, are we then going to have a public hearing on these before we send them to the town council?
I would imagine we might have to have a public hearing.
I, the, the zoning ordinance doesn't require, but I think you should. And I think the zoning ordinance probably should, but it doesn't.
We're talking, we're talking months away.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, this is why we're starting now, because it could be a couple of months, yeah. We've got a lot going here.
That's why we need a C condition.
Well, we're.
In multi-unit townhouse.
Until a project is actually vested under Maryland laws, it has to adhere to any law that's adopted. So, I mean, you could get approval. It might take four months to get a site plan approval and it might take another two months to get final permit approval and agency approvals, make six months. Then it may take another few months to actually start construction. So it might be a year before a project that got approved today would actually get.
But then they would have to start all over? That just doesn't.
That's, they don't want to do that either. So they want to participate in this process, find out what, what you're contemplating and make sure they're designing it to meet the basic standards. In practice, that's how it would work. But you're right, it's better to have the playing field level, right?
I wouldn't consider that appropriate.
And, and to expert like this, I think. And, and to expert like this, I think it's worth doing. I, that's, I mean, we almost had it, but we had to condense our schedule and get it done. So this has been out, it's been publicized for months now, three months.
We've had it out.
Longer. But I do think we should, I mean, you could schedule a public hearing at the next meeting if you wanted, even though you're not ready for it yet, you still have an opportunity. Public can come at your next meeting. Then you can begin your deliberations and ask any questions and be ready to approve it at the December meeting.
I think we've got a lot of work on these, plus my feeling about it. Chairman, I mean, Chairman, I keep calling you Chairman, sometimes I wish you were, but anyway. Commissioner Brown, you had questions about the compatibility issues as well as the townhouse. What were some of your questions quickly?
Well, first of all, you, what is the difference between blocks and so?
Yeah. So what you see on that project would be a cluster of eight houses, composed of two blocks. Each block has four, maybe five houses, 10 houses. So a block is just, they also call it a stick, stick of townhouses. It's just the units. But the clusters, you know, they're groupings of townhouse blocks.
Anything more?
Know what that is? I was trying to relate it to the financing compatibility. Yes, thank you. That's exactly what I mean. Thank you. That's, that's right.
Jan, do you have any questions? Oh, Larry, ever some more?
Change that to 290, please, everybody.
What page is that?
That's on.
The top of.
It's item C.
Oh, 290, okay.
The following paragraph, exceptions, why are we deleting all the exceptions?
I agree there.
And it says, exceptions may be waived, it's not a requirement. Maybe, not sure. I would include all of them, but they're all clear.
I, kind of, the short answer is, I kind of wanted these developments to achieve all these things and still meet the minimum setback requirements. I didn't want there to be wave standards and place a building five feet from the other building, which is allowed under the current code. Five, a townhouse block, five feet from another townhouse block, this is not a good situation. That's what the current code allows. And so I was trying to make it such that there are no exceptions, that the minimum standards be met. And in some places, you could allow them exceptions, you could allow it go down to 15 feet. So the side building to side building, it's 30 feet, you could let it go down to 15 feet.
Some of these things, like wave or building, setback substantially improves the design.
I like that standard too. Yeah.
Yeah. And it's not a requirement, it just says may be waived, if, you know. So I would, I would like to go through those.
Because we need a lot of detail on this.
And the other one that I have for the very last may allow for surface parking or parking below grade, but shall not provide parking in a structure above ground level. That means that in that particular one there, they couldn't, they couldn't have a structure for covered parking? That makes no sense. I mean, down in Florida, they have separate buildings for people parking, but I think two of them, that's a, that's a.
Okay.
Parking, parking is a major problem. That's that issue.
Right. But one of the reasons it's a problem is because we're trying to build too dense. So those two things should come together.
It's the blast, I mean, they, you're talking about RV too, roads, just, the roads are so narrow, you can't park and ride them at the same time.
I understand that, but at the same time.
Let's not have this discussion tonight.
Don't address that issue.
Yeah.
It is an issue.
Okay, let's not discuss it till right now, because we've got to move on. We've just got critical area. Jan, did you want anything to ask or?
No, I've said.
Kathleen, what are your thoughts?
I don't have any questions.
Laurie, really quickly, do you have one last thing you want to say before we move on?
About these?
Yeah. Or just a question, really?
Specifically?
I mean, we've got to get into more detail at the next meeting, of course. So any question quickly for Chris?
My thoughts quickly are, I would like to get through these. I do not agree with doing anything.
We'll talk, we'll do discussions about that. Questions in case you need them answered for your research for the next month or so, because you're going to probably be doing some research right now. Any quick question for Chris?
Are these coming back differently ever?
Well, next month, they're going to be as you see them. They're not coming back differently. Hopefully, this is an introduction so that you can go back and now review, go through the neighborhood and determine what it is you like, don't like, want to add, subtract, et cetera. This is an introduction.
So my problem with this is, is that they are missing a lot of things.
And that's what you need to bring in next time.
However, we're having a trend of, we want to have things on the agenda. So I would like to get walkability language added as soon as possible. I passed out this, it has all kinds of standards in it. This is, this is a handout, two design standards for Sacramento, and this includes huge buildings that would be in Sacramento, California. But there's a lot of good language in here.
Oh, you know what? Is this, is this what you passed out? Is this, oh, I think I have them all actually, so let me just pass them out. I don't think they have them at all.
If we read through these, there's some about roofs, there's some about all kinds of things, one liners that we could send to Chris and he could get them on the agenda.
And then, oopsie.
And then the last thing that I passed out is about sustainability metrics.
That does, yeah. Oh, and we got this. Wow, you did do some homework already.
These are, these are oldies but goodies. They never made it. I did give them to you one day though, Cindy.
Yeah, I do. I think I do have them at home, yeah.
I noticed during the ARPA conversation by the town council, they were talking about incorporating, you know, green building, things like that into, you know, the town and to, into their projects. And, you know, there's, there's sustainability metrics for construction and we're building very big stuff, unfortunately, but I think we are. So.
So we all need to read.
I would like everybody to look at these and Chris as well, if you put.
You just handed out for me.
Yeah, I mean, I think most of the council was very lauding of incorporating, you know, green infrastructure into projects. And if we're going to build a lot of big stuff, but we're not going to do that, then we're failing on that goal of theirs.
Chris, what would you like to add to the compatibility? Anything that you want to tell us before we go back and look at it a little bit more?
I think the sustainability, walkability are apt, they're perfectly aligned with this.
So we need to, we need to make some math additions.
Perfectly aligned with the whole design standards. And I think we could add sections and standards for.
But you wouldn't add that to compatibility if you did the design standards?
Right.
Exactly. Okay. Anything more to the compatibility issue?
No.
Okay, so just reread that and understand it as it is and come back next month. We're going to go over those both again. Okay.
I need to say, if, if you were building in an area that didn't have sidewalks, you couldn't say, in order to be compatible with this area, I'm not going to provide sidewalks. So you should approve, no, you have to meet the standards in the code and be compatible. We're building a town, so, you know, I just want you to know, when you read the compatibility standards, yeah, maybe there are some things you might not like necessarily and that becomes the basis of comparison. But you still have to meet the minimum standards of the code and prove, demonstrate compatibility. So build sidewalks if they don't exist, because that's going to be ground, that's going to be a foundational requirement.
Yeah.
Or provide, you know, the required amount of parking, even though the neighborhood doesn't have the required number of parking spaces. Okay? You still have to provide parking. You can't say, in order to meet the standards, I have to forego some other standard. No, you can't do that.
Okay, so under unfinished business, both of these agenda items, we're going to again bring back next month. So if you guys can read up on this, do a little research on it, figure out if you want to add, subtract, et cetera, we're going to do, or have more questions, we're going to do that as well. But I know that Chris wants to get to this number five, new business update on the critical area regulation, as that is a time limited situation as well. So go ahead, Chris, and.
May I ask one question about this recommendation? It says, by adding a new section, section 290-23, we already have a 290-23 on the code. You're eliminating that section and replacing it with this section?
No, the numbers would be reordered, reordered, so that existing 23 would become 24.
Okay.
Okay, critical area, sir.
Okay. This here before you is, this book is.
Yes.
The model of critical area ordinance from the Critical Area Commission. This is, is required every six years for jurisdictions within the critical area to comprehensively review and update their critical area standards. The town hasn't done this for quite some time. I remember back in 26, 2015, 2016, we got really close. But since then, the state has updated its regulations at least once, probably two times. So this is the model now that's current and I'm providing it for you. This is not as interesting as the design standards, compatibility standards. And we don't have the same leeway that we have in crafting design standards or typical zoning ordinances, because whatever we adopt in critical areas has to be consistent with state law and state regulations and has to be approved by the state Critical Area Commission. So there's really a joint relationship here between the two. It's almost like little brother, big brother, and we're not the big brother. But we can deal with specifics that we care about, that the state in its size doesn't, can't care about. And so, for instance, in the town's current regulations in the critical area, it requires buffer yards, planted areas from the edge of the water inwards and has all these standards related to it. That is not in any critical area standard from the state. It's something that the town itself crafted years ago. So we have leeway, as long as we're consistent with the state standards and not more lenient than them, we can deal with things that are new. And it's one area that the previous planning commission and I discussed, and that was standards for removing trees in the critical area. There's a general policy that there should be no net loss of trees within the critical area and that's state standards. But it's really not clear how that, how we go about administering that, particularly in the IDA area, and that's the most intensely developed parts. You can, property owner, you can cut down every tree on your property. You just have to, in fact, all, all we do is require that you replace those trees because we try to keep that net loss standard. But there's no code provision that says you must replace tree, remove one for one. It's a policy, it's almost a request that we make, essentially to property owners. Sure, you're removing a tree in a critical area, please replace it. Now, if you remove trees on account of a development application, like I'm building an addition to the house or I'm building a new house and clearing this forest, then all the planting standards come into fruition and you apply them. But if you're simply removing trees for your personal use, you could do that. And even though there, so we, so what we worked with the planning commission before was a sort of set of standards that dealt with that issue and how to kind of track trees and how to ensure that they're actually replanted on lots. And I like to bring, when I begin into this, I'm going to reintroduce those parts of the code. And again, that's just another way, area where Chesapeake Beach might do something different than, differently than other jurisdictions. This is a snippet of the critical area map. There are three critical area zones, we know this now, resource conservation, limited development and intensively developed. The resource conservation area is the most restrictive part, limited development area is very restrictive and intensively developed is not very restrictive at all. The only thing of substance in the IDA is that you have, each property owner, owner or developer has to do a stormwater management plan, even if their lot is small, even if their application is minor, they have to do a, a critical, a critical area stormwater management plan. They have to prove that the pollutants running off their lot will be 10% reduced or 10% lower than current conditions. So basically, you have to improve things marginally. So they have to do this rather complex spreadsheet analysis to track the, the amount of phosphorus that is washed off the property. And as a result, they have to do rain gardens or rain barrels or liters to spread the water to percolate into the ground. So they have to do that kind of thing, which is to say, it's not much, candidly. The real requirements come into the yellow areas on the map. That's where it's quite difficult to actually develop, it's very difficult to remove trees, you have to, you can't cover more than 15% of the lot. There's all these sort of standards that come into play. In the resource conservation areas, resource conservation area, RCA, those areas are generally not very developable at all. So while the state has standards, standards are not very applicable to us, it'd be, it's really rare, I don't think I've ever seen an RCA project come to the town ever.
Well, the RPCs did then.
Well, that project in Richfield Station through, through growth allocation. So it was, the growth allocation changed the zoning category.
Right, but it was in this RCA.
Yeah, yeah. So we have, so the code is organized under each of those major sections, IDA, RCA, LDA, and then it's the buffer. The buffer is the, the band of land that runs along the water or tidal wetland or marsh or stream, okay? So there are going to be specific standards for that. And then there's part of that 100-foot buffer in the town that has been disturbed already. And that's called the modified buffer area, MBA. So everywhere in town where there's development, the buffer has been modified, all along Fishing Creek, there's a marina there now, or out here along the bay, there's houses and marine, hotels and everything else. So that is the modified buffer. There are standards for the modified buffer that are pretty stringent and have to be met. If you remove a tree in the buffer or the modified buffer, you have to do a simplified, where you have to do a buffer management plan and show how you're going to replant those, those trees at a, at a ratio far higher than what you removed. And so there's a lot of kind of built in standards that, over the long term, help mitigate the impacts of development in the buffer area. So this is the model and I'm showing it to you now and I'm going to bring in two or three chapters at a time until we get. And I'm going to bring in two or three chapters at a time until we get through this. That's my approach. And I'll show you what the model is, because you'll see it, and where I would suggest we consider changing the model ordinance to either beef it up or to clarify it. And I will be doing that in coordination with the Critical Area Commission staff, because ultimately, they have to approve it. So I want them to know what it is that the planning commission's thinking, too. So there's no surprises when we get finished. But I wanted to take it small bites at a time, and as long as they know that we're moving forward, they know we're here tonight talking about it, the staff, the Critical Area Commission. I want us to have continual kind of...
Progress.
Progress to working our way through this big document.
Are we, are we mapping a modified buffer zone?
No.
No.
It's not mapped. It's determined in the field, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's, the buffer changes, you know, shorelines change and everything. So at the time an application is proposed, the site plan, the engineer is required to map the buffer. So they will gotten actually measure where the mean high tide is at the time of application, 100 feet in.
So how long do you think it's going to take us to get through all this?
Three, four months. But I don't imagine it would take up most or much of any meeting. I want to send it to you in advance and just ask you if you have any questions, and highlight where I would suggest we make changes. But spend most of our time on these other issues and development standards for the town.
So if we already have this packet, you're going to just ask us to, at this next meeting, just do chapters one, two, and three, or A, B, and C, or whatever it is?
Chapters one and two.
So we're going to have, like, homework, so just, so keep this packet together.
Keep it together and plan to read parts one and two of this draft of the model ordinance, okay? And then, and in our next meeting, we obviously won't have to spend much time on it. And there's only actually one change that I would actually suggest making to the IDA standard, and that concerns steep slopes in the IDA. You can disturb steep slopes now in the IDA, and I would suggest that we treat those slopes like we would if they were in the LDA. So right now, that's the only substantive change that I would consider bringing to you. We might change the purpose statements a little bit to make them more in the form that we like it in Chesapeake Beach, but...
All right. Are there any questions? So anything else on this packet, then, that you want us to know about before we... No, so we'll just maintain. Do we have a packet like this for Commissioner Hahn?
Well, yeah, I have some.
Because I got to make sure she gets one.
Like I said, if we're going to be working on this, I can take a... Instead of having the loose...
Maybe that would probably be better, and that way we'll make sure we have it. What would be better? Okay, what is, Commissioner, that would be better? Would you like to have these on your person? Or would you like to keep them here at town hall? What is the best thing?
No, I mean, I would put them in binders for you, and you take them.
Take them wherever we want.
Yeah.
So you would have to punch holes and do the whole nine yards.
Versus that clump of paper there is what I'm saying.
I think that would probably be helpful, because it's pretty thick and we'll lose it, so...
Flip.
Yeah.
Yeah, so why don't we do that? This is a lot, and we don't want to...
I wrote on mine, so...
I wrote on mine.
I'll just... We haven't even started. And she's already completely filled hers out. So can we write your names on them to make sure that...
Just put your name on top of them.
And since I've touched mine, I'll do that.
And then you can stop back by here and pick it up.
Just put your name on it so that you can get the same one back. I know, exactly. Okay.
No one wants your written-on copy.
All right. Mr. Jakubiec, is there anything more before it's almost nine o'clock?
I got it done.
And I know you want to get home, and we all do, too.
No.
Okay, so we now have our homework for the next meeting. We've got a lot of homework. Retain this if you can, so you can work on it while you're gone, of course. If you want to look at this, use it as your resource. All right, if there are no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn? I want to remind everybody that our next meeting is the 8th of November.
Right.
I, yes.
And I just want to alert everybody of two things that might come up for me. I'm having surgery the first week of December. I don't know what day yet. That's our meeting, the 7th. And then my son is likely pending injuries or whatever, graduating from basic training in January. And that will be over our meeting, so that's two in a row for me. Maybe, maybe not in December.
For, for that, exactly right. Okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, I certainly moved to adjourn the meeting.
And do we have a second?
Second.
And, okay, all in favor?
I am.
And I am. And the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, guys. Yes, I think you all deserve it.
No, I like that 11:09.
Oh, didn't you like the 11:30? Okay, yeah, I think that, you know, if it didn't make our, if it didn't make Madam Clark sick, I would be fine with it, too, but, you know, I want to make sure she's healthy.
Yeah, we'll see you soon. Not that far.